that was created in the early 1900s and laid out by Howard Van Dorn Shaw. Again, the city should be very, very proud to have that as the newest National Historic
Going the wrong way, sorry gentlemen. This is the home directly to the west. These are the two homes that are directly across the street from the lot, and you can see that the lot is vacant. And this is the home directly to the west. And this, of course, is the lot. It's difficult to see, but if you look hard enough, you can see the tape on the ground reflecting approximately where the house will rest. And this is a photo from the site, and in fact, you can see the tape to the right of the photo where the detached garage would be. And you can also see that the other detached garages are in fairly, pretty much the same location. We're requesting approval of variance to set the proposed residence fifteen feet from the front property boundary to allow better relationship to the existing homes on the street. This will create an encroachment into the current front yard setback of twenty-five feet. We're also requesting approval of variance to allow the proposed garage to be set back from the rear lot line, two feet consistent with the adjacent properties. In fact, there are some garages that are actually closer than that. This would create a six-foot encroachment into the current eight-foot rear yard setback requirement. I'll move through this part of my presentation quickly because as I pointed out, we were approved by the building review board, but I think it's important to note that the house is very simple, the proposed house is very simple in style, so it complements the neighborhood, it is consistent. The whole purpose of this was to have the house fit consistently into the neighborhood as if it never, the house was never torn down. This is the east side of the house, proposed east side of the house. This is the proposed west side of the house. And I would like to also point out that we're using hardy board siding and trim. There is a discussion of using the cedar shingles, although that's not a consistent material in the neighborhood. We are strongly considering it, and we are using simulated divided light windows. I marked in yellow, although it's coming out a little darker on this photo, the area that would be technically the encroachment on the garage as it relates to the rear setback. And I think I jumped ahead too quickly here, there we go. And this is the rendering of the home that we were approved for, and these are the colors. These colors you see are a reflection of what will be there. Hopefully, the landscape will look as nice as this photo. And that's the conclusion of my presentation, Mr. Chairman, and I'm ready to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Considerations from the staff, identification of issues?
Thank you, Acting Chairman Ciccarelli. Ariel Stoudt, our planning intern, actually prepared the staff report and recommendation for you this evening. She actually had class this evening, so could not attend, so I will be giving the comments in her place. Just some background information, the petitioner touched on this in his presentation. There was an existing home on this lot, I think back in 2008, the home was taken down due to public safety concerns. So this is actually a replacement structure for that existing home. When we look back at the record for where that home sat on the lot, this is relatively consistent with the front yard setback as was there originally. As proposed, the home does align with the other homes along Mills Court. The area is an older neighborhood in Lake Forest. It was developed prior to the requirement for a forty-foot front yard setback. The building review board felt strongly that aligning the home to be consistent with the prevailing setback along the street was important for the redevelopment of this lot and to allow the home to sit consistently on the street. The, with respect to the detached garage, the petitioner has studied a lot of locations for that detached garage. As proposed, the garage maximizes both the functionality of a two-car garage on the property and the setback from the rear property line. So what you're seeing is a factor of that study. I believe there is a diagram in your packets that showed how complying with the setbacks really creates a non-functioning garage. And again, detached garages are consistent and common in the neighborhood. I think on a lot like this, and this was mentioned at the building review board meeting, that construction traffic and staging will be important to monitor as construction occurs, given the narrowness of Mills Court and the proximity of other homes. And we will, at the time of permit, review a planning and staging plan, a traffic and staging plan for this property. The findings are in the staff report supportive of this project. I'd be happy to answer questions that you may have.
Any questions for staff or the petitioner?
I have a couple. Oh.
Yes, I do as well.
Sure. Go ahead.
Okay. Mr. Swanson, there's an evergreen tree on the northeast, at the northeast corner of this property. It's actually on the neighbor's property to the north. And right now, it looked as though the branches of that evergreen tree were hovering very near or over the taped-out area for the proposed garage. And I'll ask staff to address this as well. Has consideration been made for that evergreen tree?
Well, I was actually trying to pull up the photo and I screwed up, but to answer your question, sir, I can, I've been working with the city for over thirty-five years, and I can assure you, and I'm sure you recognize this, that the staff forester is very thorough in that regard. I'm comforted that it is a pine tree because there's a better chance of survival than, say, if it were an oak tree. But we would be required to take every precaution. And I would also add that, and this had nothing to do with the tree, but there's a six-foot easement that runs through that side of the property for a sewer. And in fact, we were considering putting the garage two feet off of that line. And we're going to ask the board for, the zoning board, for a variance for that as well. As a result, we decided it was best to just stay out of the easement altogether. And as a result, we picked up an extra six feet that we would likely not have. So I'm not professant to be a forester, but I can tell you that the city forester will have a say in this before this is all said and done. And I think Megan will confirm that we also have to go through a review of our landscape plan. And I, Megan and I would assume that it would be part of that process.
That tree is actually on the property of the neighbor to the north.
You mentioned that.
Right. Have you, do you know about this, Megan?
The city arborist has reviewed the project and viewed the staked property. So certainly, if there are concerns, he will continue to work with the petitioner to look at the construction techniques if necessary. But at this time, he was comfortable with the plan.
And it's been taken into account, all right. We received a letter of correspondence from the neighbor to the north in which she raised a number of issues of concern. I wonder if you might address those, Mr. Swanson. With respect to the fence and the site of the proposed garage, she notes that the fence is in dilapidated condition. Is there any plan to replace the fence or?
My assumption is that if it's on our property, we would replace it. The purpose of this home is to build it for sale. And if it's on someone else's property, I mean, obviously, we wouldn't have much of a say in that. But to the extent that it is on our property, it would be replaced.
There's a utility pole in the northeast corner there. There's also one in the southeast corner.
That's correct.
Of the property. Will the electrics, will the utility service, do you know which one that'll be coming from to the home?
I don't, actually.
Because the northeast one, it would probably have to go over the top of the garage. And I noted, and then, and the residents to the west of your site, that those utility wires hang lower than the level of a garage roof, so.
I could be mistaken on this, but I think it's been fairly common for situations like that, to try to bury the lines to the house as opposed to having them overhead. I think that's the easy answer to that. It might not be true in the smaller neighborhoods, the smaller lots, but it's certainly true in just about everything else that we do.
My singular concern about the project or the petition is the driveway situation. It looks as though it would, it'll be rather difficult to pull in and out of the garages. Certainly, you wouldn't be able to turn around. It would be difficult to turn around back there. But if you were pulling straight in, my real issue is when you're trying to get out of that space. I was over there this afternoon, and there was a vehicle parked where the driveway is marked now. And when they came, they came to retrieve the vehicle while I was there, and they backed out. Do you have that slide, the neighborhood plan that showed the lots?
I do.
If you wouldn't mind putting that up for just a moment. So you see at the end of Mills Court, there's a slight rounded area where presumably you can go down to the dead end and turn around and drive back out. The driveway at 296 is proposed on the east edge of the property there. When you back straight out, if you're backing out, I watched this vehicle do this. They literally had to back into the driveway of the neighbor of 299 to redirect their car out of Mills Court. And this speaks specifically to one of the criterion, one of the criteria for a variance with respect to congestion. And I don't know enough, and I'll ask staff this as well, are there issues with respect to having to back out of a driveway into somebody else's property to redirect your car in a direction that it can exit the street?
The use of a neighbor's driveway would be going onto private property. So, you know, they would have to maneuver in such a way that maintains the car on public.
I had a much smaller car, and I pulled in there and tried to do it, I couldn't do it. I, I mean, I watched this, she was a high schooler. She made several three-point turns just to get the car pointed out of Mills Court. Now, again, if you were pulling straight out, driving forward, it would be easy to pull onto that street. But as I say, there's no real turnaround opportunity in the garage area to turn your car around. So you're going to pull in one way and back out the other is my presumption. I'm just wondering.
Well, that's a genuine, legitimate concern. I think the hardship here is that that cul-de-sac is significantly smaller than a typical cul-de-sac in Lake Forest. You could say that about the street itself. There are probably a lot of inherent hardships, if you will, that people on the street have to deal with, with the tighter lots. We considered putting the house, flipping it and having the garage on the other side, but clearly, you can see there's a tremendous amount of open space to the east of this. And we felt it was better for the neighbor at 290 if we set the house as is because it gave him a little more of a vista to the back and didn't have the garage as an obstruction.
You know, I considered that as well, only because right across the street at 297, their driveway is on the west side, and actually, 291's is on the east, so they have a double driveway there that makes it very easy for both.
Right.
Those residents to move in and out from the back of their houses and their garages. I am very concerned about how you're going to get a car in and out of the garages, in and out of that driveways it's currently designed, without making some kind of incursion on neighboring property.
Well, the only thing I could say to that is, I mean, obviously, there are always going to be situations where you're going to utilize someone's driveway, back into driveways all the time to turn around, as I'm sure we all do. There are a number of driveways in the city, and for that matter, many cities, where they share a driveway going to a property and splits off.
As they do across the street.
Right. So, in fact, it's actually encouraged sometimes because it minimizes the amount of impervious surface. In this case, however, it's not a case of minimizing impervious surface, it's more of an access issue. Short of us being able to expand that cul-de-sac to a normal-sized cul-de-sac, I'm not sure there's a whole lot we can do.
Or move the driveway to the west side of the property, then there would be an area where you could back into the cul-de-sac.
That's very true.
And redirect the car.
Board member Culberson, there is a unique challenge to this lot in that there is a city-owned pipe that runs along the east side of this property. So the home and driveway was actually considered by city engineering staff in such a way that allows for the most area to the east to allow for maintenance of that pipe. So that was part of the considerations when laying out this property.
Where does that run exactly? Can you say on the plan? Is it underneath?
It would be on the east side of the property.
Between Mills Court and Noble. Generally along the property line.
But how close? Right on the border, a few, a couple of inches?
It's pretty close to the east property line. The exact location, I don't have that information in front of me.
Well, would it be inside, would it be in a setback? Or would a house be constructed over it?
The distance allows for improved maintenance for the line. So if maintenance does need to occur at that location, there's room for city equipment to maintain that line.
I like the design, I like all your, your designs are beautiful, so, you know, I like your work. And I think if it weren't for that aspect, I wouldn't have any trouble with this at all. I just foresee a problem, and I note that the resident of 299, I don't believe we've received any correspondence from them, right? But it's, I, the only other thing you could do is back out and.
Back down Mills Court.
And back into McKinley.
And back into somebody else's driveway to turn around or something like that.
Can you just talk about this other structure that's shown on this plan here to the east of 296? Or if that, what is that?
It doesn't exist.
Doesn't exist.
We pulled this information from the city records and they just weren't updated.
What is that over there?
It's vacant lot, basically, it's vacant area. It's actually a part of 299, if I'm not mistaken.
Property to the east is the rear yard of the homes that front on Edgewood. That structure is no longer there. If it was there in the past, it's not there now. And just to continue with some additional information on the driveway, that was the location of the existing driveway on this property. So that is an existing condition that is being carried on with this development plan.
Can you just talk for a second about what you, any sort of hardship you might see in terms of the marketability of the house, since it's a spec house? You're planning to sell it, if you were to flip it and share a driveway on the other side, do you feel like that's going to decrease the value or somehow hurt the marketability of the property?
Well, we couldn't share the driveway unless the neighbor were in agreement with it. And I suppose, I haven't heard any arguments, and Megan, correct me if I'm wrong, but if there have been any arguments through this process for flipping the house the other way. We've had a number of conversations about this. I think the reason, and Megan pointed it out, was we determined we have a sewer easement along that side. And we felt as a group that there, it could be problematic if there were a house there, whereas a driveway is an easily repaired thing. I doubt that in our lifetime that that pipe will ever have to be repaired, but that's not the way engineers and attorneys look at things. So from that perspective, I think we were trying to stay out of that realm as best we could. And in fact, the reason we actually set the house the way we did is we wanted to be careful about even when excavating, the overdig didn't go on the adjacent property. So there was some thought that was involved in this. I would argue that it might be attractive coming down the street and actually seeing that side of the house. If you looked at the rendering, you're seeing, you're looking away from it. But I think it's more of a practical matter in terms of the easements and so forth. It made sense to set the house the way we did. Honestly, that's the only argument that I can make. I mean, every other argument I've heard, I would agree with. I would absolutely agree with.
I think it also should be noted as well that 282 and 290 share the same driveway on the west side. So to have 290 and 296 shared would be unrealistic since 282 and 290 share the same driveway.
Nineties driveway is on the west.
Right.
I just, I guess I have one more question of you all, and that is, is there any situation that could arise where the owner of, if it's true that you need to back into the driveway at 299 to back out of the driveway, and the owner of 299 says, "I don't want you using my driveway, I don't care." Is that, could they say that? And could they create a situation where the guy couldn't back out of his driveway because they don't want it on his property?
Neighbors do amazing things.
Really?
Keep in mind that the apron to that driveway is probably partially on the city right-of-way.
That's correct.
So if you're backing in and just hitting that apron, that's one thing. The neighbor could barricade at the property line if they chose to do that, and then someone would have to get out of there some other way. But if you're just backing up onto that apron, that's public property.
Who is that? Public.
This whole street is quite unusual, it doesn't meet any standards, so I can't speak to exactly where that apron is or how much of it might be within that, the right-of-way. The right-of-way there is shown as a squared-off portion, so it goes beyond the bulb of the cul-de-sac.
Actually, this is, as I pointed out earlier, it's an unusual street. It's narrower than a typical Lake Forest street, and the right-of-way is narrower. But typically, a right-of-way is sixty to sixty-six feet, that's typical. This is not typical, so I would guess, from looking at this, that it's approximately forty feet. So you can do the math, and it comes out to about eight to ten feet of area. It's not exactly enough to back in and not encroach on someone's property, but the reality is, just about every driveway in Lake Forest, I can pull into and pull out of and hopefully not be, you know, hassled.
I have a question for Megan, for the staff. You mentioned that the original, well, the preceding structure was torn down because it was a safety hazard, and that was done in 2008. Was there a garage that was also demolished? Because that wasn't clear from the notes that I had received. I knew the structure the house was, but I didn't know about the garage.
It was a single-family home and a detached garage, and both structures were removed.
And where was the detached garage that was demolished?
In generally this location.
In general, so was it only two feet from the north end of that property line, or was it a little further back?
That's information that I would have to research for you.
There's actually a, we actually have a picture of the structure in its current form on Google Earth. And we can look at that structure and note not only the driveway configuration, but also with the house. So I share that for consideration to Commissioner Culberson and.
I want to just pick up on, you said it's very likely that a portion of the driveway is on city property, or the apron, I should say. So would that be the space, for instance, between the bubble on the cul-de-sac there, the little, and, and? No. See where the 299 is?
Right here.
299.
It's the area between the, here.
Right, I'm looking at 299.
Okay, I'm sorry, it's that.
That dashed line, right there.
That's correct.
Okay, that, would that be city property? Okay, and I will agree that the apron of the driveway goes right to the cul-de-sac. It does go, the pavement merges right into the cul-de-sac. So there are, there is some distance there that would be considered city property.
Well, the other point I'd like to make is it's fairly clear, and it might even reflect it on the Google Earth photo. You're right, it does, I actually looked it up on Google Earth and did this exact same thing that you did.
No, no, that's the old structure that was demolished.
It looks to me, and it should show it on there, that they actually shared an apron.
They did.
Yeah, yeah. So there seems to be a history of cooperation in that.
And you can also, I'm not a city engineer from a sewer standpoint, but you can see the sewer well caps in both the cul-de-sac as well as at the end of the driveway, indicating where the line might run, and.
Can you get 299?
Sure.
Because that's the driveway in question, that's the one they're backing.
There you go.
It would seem to me that if I was the one developing this property, that I would not want to create a situation when this house was done, we were trying to sell it, where you had a problem with that neighbor at 299, and that guy suddenly became unreasonable and might create a problem for you, where you've got a house that you can't back out of without backing into this guy's property. I'd hate to find that out later.
Well, I will say that regardless, and I would, I could stand here and agree with you in terms of the siding of the house, I think it's a horse at peace. It could work either way from an aesthetic standpoint. So short of working out the easement issue, I would agree with everything that you just said. It would not change, however, the setback configuration that we're considering. In fact, I would even make the argument at that point that we would try to seek a variance to get a two-foot off the west line, because right now, we're pushed away to avoid that sewer line. So there's a number of really compelling arguments that you make for all of this. And I have, I've yet to hear one that would really stop us from doing it, short of the city engineer telling us that it could be, that could be problematic because of the sewer line that's there.
Yeah, I don't really know if it's within our peruse here to talk about which side of the house the driveway should be on for this parking issue. I don't know that that's really what's in front of us, but just in looking at the situation, it just seems like it could be problematic at some point. And if it were me, I'd want to try to resolve that before I put a shovel in the ground as opposed to finding out later. But I don't think that's really what's in front of us.
What I could.
I, I.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I just beg to differ with that, because if you look at criterion number four, it does specifically speak to congestion. And I have the verbiage right in front of me. Here it is. "The variance in resulting addition will not impair light or ventilation to adjacent properties, increase congestion, endanger public safety, or diminish property values." So, you know, I mean, not trying to be difficult here, but when, as you say, when you look at it as a practical matter, there's going to be some incursion on that property, I believe.
Yeah, I just don't.
Could that driveway at the end, of course, I don't know what the width restriction is at the end of the driveways, but could that be bubbled out a little bit on the left side so that you could kind of swing your car a little bit? We've got a utility pole there.
Utility pole's on the right side.
So I'm saying, could it be bubbled out this way?
Carved out, so.
Back up like this.
Sure.
Nobody can see what I'm talking about here.
No, I know what you're talking about, actually.
You know, it's the.
In other words, encroach on the six, on the 296 to.
Yeah, on the 296, as you get down there past the house, bubble it out. The apron's wider. So you'd have ability to sort of swing your car out and then back it up and head out.
Well, Megan, in our discussions, and with your discussions with other staff members, do you recall any reason why we couldn't flip the house?
I think it can certainly be explored. The engineering staff would have to review the revised proposal in the context of the site restraints. But that's certainly an option to explore.
But with it, I guess my point is that, I mean, obviously, our best hope would be to get approval for the variance aspect of this and work out that issue, whether it should be flipped or not, with staff as we move through the next level, because it's really a setback issue at this point.
If I may interject, there was, there's a similar problem at 299, where that person, when they try to back out of their driveway, there's nowhere to go. So they, they may have to work out something between them.
Unless they have a turnaround option on their property.
It doesn't look like they do.
Oh, it doesn't appear, it's straight back according to the photograph.
Probably show up on Google Earth.
Yes, Google Earth's showing it going straight back.
Was the prior demolished garage a one-car or two-car garage?
It was a two-car garage.
It was a two, it was a two-car. It may not be any issue at all, and these guys may have been cooperating for the last fifty years on backing into everybody's driveways. You just, you don't know, but. Yeah, but you've got a new owner. Right, that's the whole thing, the dynamics are changing now, so you just don't know what people are going to do.
I grew up in a house that was a lot smaller than this, on a lot smaller lot, with a lot tighter garage configuration, and we shared a driveway with the neighbor, and we got along. You just do, so.
The real problem here is the location of that sewer line on the east property line, or very close to it. Engineering is not going to want that house with the basement coming closer to that sewer line. They prefer, today, they prefer a twenty-foot easement, ten foot on either side of those lines. So I just think from engineering standpoint, we have looked at this. In fact, we looked at it with the previous owner when the house was going to be demolished and they were. and they were going to build a replacement structure. And we did everything we could to continue to push them, even though the lot's narrow, but push them to the west. So, I think this lot has, it's a neighborhood that was obviously developed before any of these standards were in place. Road, lot width, setbacks, all of that. So, you're dealing with a number of hardships that we wouldn't build today, but I think this is a neighborhood of smaller homes, some of our lower-priced homes, that acknowledge some of the limitations of the neighborhood.
And the garage can't be moved over more to the west? Would that make it easier to make that turn?
It moved over farther, no, because it would, it would actually make it more difficult.
Yeah.
We actually thought about turning it so that you go into the garage as a side load, and then it becomes absolutely impossible. And by the way, I might add, it also significantly increases the amount of impervious surface.
Now, I think what he's saying is, if you were to move the garage to the west...
To the west.
And then have the ability to back out and turn around back by the garage so that you could pull your car out straight and then just drive into the street.
Directly behind the home, the proposed home, unless, of course, that was planned to be patio, or there's not much green that's going to be there.
It is proposed to be patio, and I'm going to use the mouse and see if it actually can... If you shift the garage physically over this way, it becomes that much more problematic to actually get into the garage. I mean, you could see, this is getting tight as it is, right in here.
It's really, yeah, it's tight as it is. It's true.
In fact, if I, if not for that sewer, we would have shifted, we would have asked to shift the garage two feet off of this line as well. In fact, that was our initial proposal as we got into this discussion, and it wasn't until staff came back, engineering staff came back and pointed out there was an easement there. It did not show up on our survey.
Did you check to make sure that you can get out of that, back out of that garage on the, you know, when you're, boy, it looks awful.
The answer is yes, you can get out of there. It isn't pretty, but you can get out of there.
The artist rendering that you've got of your proposed home, which is part of our packet, has got a lot of landscaping to the east of the house. And then there's some bushes to the right of the driveway. I could not understand, I couldn't see based on the footprint that you had taped off, how that could possibly, there could be any room for any landscaping. Because I pulled my car all the way up there as far as I could and then backed it out. I mean, it was very narrow. I just didn't see how, because it's beautifully landscaped, but I just didn't see how that could happen.
Well, let me start by saying that it is an artist rendering, and they do take liberties with landscaping. This is not following an actual landscape plan. So, full disclosure there. That said, the plantings along that lot line are existing and may be that we can't touch them regardless, and to the extent that we can, we will. But I will tell you this, that a very important part of our approval with the BRB was the landscape plan. And staff is reviewing that and understands that we had to make some modifications, which I believe we have done. Now, I can't stand here today and tell you that those changes or revisions have been officially approved, but to me, it's, it would be no different than submitting a full set of plans for permit and working out any of those details. But I'm reasonably certain that, and Megan, correct me if I'm wrong, and I'm sure you will, that there has been an initial review of the landscape plan.
The landscape plan was part of the building review board's discussion. The board encouraged additional plant material along the west property line to provide some plantings between the homes. With respect to plantings along the east property line, I think that that area is really too small of a planting bed on this property to support any substantial landscaping.
Okay. Are there any other questions or requests for clarification from the board, to the board or the petitioner?
I just would like to ask staff again, is, are there neighborhoods where it's customary or acceptable for neighbors to back into neighbors' driveways and it's permissible or doesn't cause a problem?
There are other neighborhoods. I'm thinking of neighborhoods off of Washington Road in the South Park area, Woodlawn Road, Cherry Road, roads much like this. They're narrow roads. Many of those don't even have the benefit of any kind of a cul-de-sac bulb at the end. So, again, I think it's a characteristic of the neighborhood, and hopefully, as people move into these neighborhoods, they realize that they need to have some tolerance and some flexibility.
Anything else?
Discussion.
Is there anything else?
No, no, no further questions. Would appreciate some discussion with my colleagues.
I mean, to me, the, but I don't know if it's for us, it'd be more for you in terms of maybe able to sell it, but that garage, just from past experience, that seems, it's going to be really hard to get out of the one side, which might, I would think, make it tough to sell. You've probably done the research, so, but...
Are you concerned about the neighbor at 299 ever coming forward and saying, "Hey, guys, you never talked to me before. I don't want you backing into my driveway."
My experience is that neighbors in Lake Forest, when they're not happy about something, they have no problem expressing that. I've even been accosted on properties, taking pictures. I could tell you that on this street, people couldn't have been friendlier. That said, first, let me answer your question, and that is, no, we haven't had any issues. Usually when people have issues, at least my experience, they show up early on in the process. As you know, there's a very thorough notification process. And I usually either get a call or a letter is sent to the city. And by the way, I didn't get a copy of that letter, so I appreciate you kind of walking through that. But that's the kind of thing that we deal with, and I have not heard anything from that neighbor.
Is there any public testimony? We are, we've been doing cross-examination all along, so is there any other cross-examination you would like to do? Any, anything that petitioner would like to rebut?
No, I think the input tonight was very good.
Any more board discussion or comment?
Well, go ahead, Louis.
Well, I really don't want to make him out and out of a molehill if it's, I do, I am concerned that someday down the road, the owner of this new project might have a neighbor who says, "Don't use our driveway." And that will be a difficult situation for this property, I think. I don't know how likely that is to happen. I'm trying to get a sense of it, and I would very much welcome thoughts of my fellow board members on this subject.
I think that's probably a hard one to gauge, because every neighbor, every neighbor's different. I mean, neighbors come and go, they change, and although this... No, it's, it would seem to me that it's your risk, or your client's risk, who's ever building the, the house, to take that, to not be clear on that, to not have some sort of preapproval from the neighbor next door that that's not going to be a problem. That's your risk, but I wouldn't want anybody personally to come back to me later and say, "How could you approve this?" Because now we have a problem, and point to our board and say, "You approved it. You approved it knowing that this problem could, could surface at some future date, and, you know, why didn't you do something about it?" I don't know if that's within our responsibility or not. I'm just saying, I think it could be a, I've seen situations like this in other areas where you just have somebody who's unreasonable and can't get by it. So, that's, that's my feeling.
Anything else?
I'm just concerned about the driveway and the garage, and getting in and out of that garage and down the street. The house looks nice. I'm sure, you know, BRB approved it, it probably should have. It looks great, but it's a very difficult location.
Does, does, does the, the point we've been discussing, Kathy, with respect to the possible use of neighbor's property to get in and out of your driveway, does that fall under criterion four with respect to congestion or diminishing property value or...
That's really the board's determination.
Or public safety.
If you feel it does, you interpret those criteria each time you look at a situation.
Because as you said, you know, it could be the owner's right.
What if the worst case happened, and the guy at 299 said, "I don't want you using my driveway." "You're not going to use my driveway." And he sued for an injunction to stop that guy from backing into his driveway.
But if the guy had a problem with it, he probably would have come forward already.
Maybe. Could be.
Well, the guy at 299 also has a problem getting out of his driveway, if you look at the rendering.
If you look at Google Earth, he too has a problem of getting out of his driveway at 299 as well.
I might add that this is not, that this is not a situation where the only way to get out of the driveway, the only way, is to back into that driveway. Human nature would be that you would do that, or we all would do that. But the reality is, as was pointed out by the chairman, they have to do that as well. So, it's, it's given and take, which appears to be fairly common in neighborhoods where you have, you have homes that are close to each other like this. Anyway, I'm sorry, I just wanted to add that.
Okay. Stuart.
I, no, I think we've vetted the conversation fairly thoroughly.
Jay. Does anybody want to make a motion?
I'd like to recommend that we approve the variance as submitted based on the findings and information set forth by staff and the staff report in front of us, that the complete staff report, the materials included in the packet, and the public testimony incorporated tonight are all part of the facts that we have kind of put forth in front of us, and that we approve the variance as it's been presented.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Wait, is there any, any more discussion? Okay, I'd like to call for a vote. All in favor of the proposed...
Variance.
Variance, please signify by saying yes.
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 This is a close one. I, I'm...
All those opposed?
Nay.
I'll vote yes on this one. Okay, the ayes have it.
And just to clarify, I, I think that was a five to one?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, members of the board.
Thank you, Mr. Swanson. Is there opportunity for public address to the zoning board of appeals? Any public address to the board? Hearing none? Any information from the staff concerning next meeting? Nothing. Entertain a motion for adjournment?
I'll make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Second that motion.
Motion. Zoning board, adjourned.